Please be seated in the room, please. We're taking roll call. The hearing has started. Thank you.
Claudia Mendozza?
Here.
Sam Conyano?
Here.
Laura Yvonne Ackert?
Here.
Allison Thomas?
Here.
Angela John Mann?
Here.
Susan Kennedy?
Here.
James Williams?
Here.
Let's rise for the invocation and predigentations.
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on the matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert and our hearts compassionate and our comments charitable. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC 1W47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider proposed applications and staff recommendations pursuant to the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and Type II variances, and issues advisory recommendations on other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, on applications not subject to zoning commission final action. Zoning hearings are quasi judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair, who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication?
We do. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Approval of the minutes? Oh, I missed one, sorry. Swearing in. Anyone who's going to be speaking?
All those wishing to testify or speak on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I second the motion to approve.
All in favor?
The May 1st.
May 1st, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we do have an amendment to the agenda. DOA 2025-00310 Covenant Church. The amendment is to exhibit C1 and C2 to reference the preliminary site plan as April 10, 2025. And in Exhibit C2, we also need reference to the preliminary regulating plan, which is dated March 24, 2025. And that's all we have for our amendments to the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda as rectified.
I'll second the motion to adopt the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go to conflicts and recusals, starting on my left. Any conflicts or recusals?
No conflicts or recusals.
No conflicts or recusals.
No conflict or recusals.
On the consent agenda, item eight, I have a recusal, and I've handed in my papers explaining it because my property is part of the application. So I won't be voting on consent agenda item eight.
Okay.
None.
None.
Commissioner Kennedy? And I have none.
Okay, that brings us to the postponements, withdrawal, remand agenda. We have item number 1W 2024-01566, beach sound. It was a Type II waiver. The applicant submitted a request to staff and before the deadline, so no net motion is necessary. It's administratively postponed to next month, June, July 3. We then have the consent agenda, so we could start with disclosures for consent.
Same order. Any disclosures on consent?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
None. On item two, I spoke to Don Herring. Item four, Kevin McGinley. Item seven, Bonnie Miskel. And of course, item eight, I'm recusing.
None.
And I have none. Any requests to pull items from consent?
I believe we do have cards.
We do have cards, and we will entertain.
How many? There's quite a few cards now, aren't there?
About eight?
There's eight.
Eight who want to speak?
It's entirely up to the commission, but I think it would be appropriate in this case to move that to the regular.
Do I have a motion for that?
A motion to move item number five to the regular.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, that will move. So we'll then...
We got a motion to consent.
So we'll need to have two motions for the consent. One to do items two through seven minus five, and then another one for number eight, since Commissioner Vennecorn needs to recuse herself. We'll have to have two motions for consent.
The motion to, is that two through seven, you said?
Minus number five.
Minus number five, and one exception for Florida. You want to do that separate?
Do that one separate.
Okay.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, the second motion?
A motion to, how do you want to put that?
To approve number eight?
Yeah, number eight.
As a recusal.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Let's move on then to the, any discussions on the consent agenda?
No, that's over.
We'll move on. You just approved the consent agenda, so we'll move on to the regular agenda items pulled.
Pulled item then, which was item five?
Maybe before we move on, we just want to double check. It was just cards on item number five, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we're done with the consent agenda, so we're on the regular agenda. Item A, items pulled from consent, which is item number five. Item number five is DOA CA 2024-01285, Sherbrooke Center. There is two requests, both for a recommendation, a development order amendment, and a Class A conditional use. And what we can do is turn it over to the applicant and then staff for presentations.
Hello. Hello, my name is Zachary Todd, represent HSQ Group, the site planner and civil engineer. We have our applicant here as well, Jason Lang, on behalf of Primrose Schools, as well as our traffic consultant, Brian Kelly with Simmons and White. Do you have a PowerPoint? So the item on the agenda today, item five is referenced, is on the northeast corner of Lantana and Lyons Road. It is within the existing Sherbrooke Center. So just a little bit about the Primrose Schools. This is a daycare facility. We'll be touching on in some later slides, representing that this is not a regular school. I think there's a lot of concern potentially on stacking, queuing, the traffic concerns. This is a daycare facility with standard operating hours, with most of the drop-offs between seven and nine, with the standard pickup between three and six. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you so much. So as referenced, this site is on the northeast corner of Lantana and Lyons Road. It's within a already developed site with dollar store, self-storage, tire store, and a current bank. On the northeast corner there, I'll go to the next slide, is where the daycare is going to be proposed. And you can see a brief overlay of the site plan on the current aerial. So this is the site plan, which staff has approved. As you can see, previously referenced, this is northeast corner, Lantana Lyons. The site plan is situated on a northeast corner of this site, on the currently vacant parcel. This is the last parcel to be developed within this site. And it's currently approved for 19,800 feet of retail, and we are proposing a 13,000 square foot daycare facility. So as previously mentioned at the start, I think a big concern here is the traffic situation. As shown here on the graphic, the previous approval is approved for 7,142 trips. We're proposing 1,171, which is a 6,000 decrease from previously approved. And as mentioned, we have our traffic consultant here, Brian Kelly, to touch on any traffic concerns. So up to the north of this site is Woodlands Middle. And I believe there's, as we know, parents that stop and park along Aquarius Boulevard to drop their children off at that school. They park before, you know, they're allowed to enter, they're parking on the grass. And I think that's causing a major concern for the adjacent neighbors. As previously mentioned, this daycare facility has 11 drop-off spots in addition to the 185-plus parking spots in there. Parents arrive, they park in the facility, they bring their child in. I know this as a parent of three and five-year-old daughters. And then you exit facility. When you come to pick up, you park in the spot, you pick up your kid, you put him in the car, and you exit. So a couple of things to note, we are not modifying any of the current entry and exit points. All access points will remain the same as current. We're filling in this daycare, as you can see here. Couple of items as well. There is a concern on the noise level. The playground area has been put on the back of this building to reduce noise. There's also a condition on here where no outside speakers to also limit. And as well, the dumpster has been put on the west side of this site plan to limit noise from that area. Another point of this is currently on the northeast corner, there's minimal landscaping, blocking Aquarius from this parcel. As part of this site plan, we'll be putting in the required buffer, so there will be trees and landscaping to limit the noise even further. As well, you can see, these are the existing signs around the site. This site will not be proposing a monument sign. It'll only be attached to the building. So that'll also kind of limit an additional sign around that area. And this here is a rendering of the site, and this would be what you would see from Aquarius, again, with the additional buffer added. So, and I'll touch on in the next couple of slides, this will be the front facade of the building. Again, the playground facility is in the back. Just to kind of summarize, requesting approval of this application, this site was previously approved for a 19,800 retail strip center. Now we're proposing a 13,794 daycare facility. There will be 6,000 less trips based on the traffic study. As well, previously mentioned in the last slide, this building will have the front facade facing Aquarius, along with the buffer, improving that view from there. This, again, is not modifying any entryways. The ingress egress to this site will remain the same. And this is consistent. We've worked out with staff, and this has been staff approved. Here's a few of the items from the staff recommendation. And this, just to note for the last couple of slides, this was the previously approved rendering. The bottom view was going to be what was facing Aquarius, so it would have been the back of the building. Now is seen on the previous slide. It'll be the front facade with the additional buffer. And that's the end of our presentation. I think we're open for questions when available.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Now we'll go on to staff presentation.
Good morning. Nancy Frontani with the zoning division, here to present on DOA CA 2024-1285 Sherbrooke Center. The subject site is located northeast corner of Lantana and Lyons Road. The future land use is commercial high, and the existing zoning district is multiple use plan development. The overall acres for this application is 8.89. The applicant is requesting a development order amendment to amend the overall site plan, to add square footage, modify and add uses, and to modify conditions of approval. Also requesting a Class A conditional use to allow a general daycare on the 2.14 acres parcel and for 214 children. The site plan indicates existing previously approved buildings, Building A, C, D, and E, and then the proposed building B, which is for the daycare. At the time of publication, staff had received 18 contacts from the public and two additional from yesterday evening, expressing concerns related to traffic, accidents, noise, and parking. Staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibit C1 and C2. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, we have members of the public who wish to speak, and we will allow that now. Nine?
There's about nine cards.
Nine cards that want to speak, and one who did not want to speak. I want to read that into the...
Okay, this is Brenda and Roaras. Unfortunately, we are already surrounded by several schools, and traffic problems already are a problem. Oppose?
Okay, then we'll call two at a time.
Okay, sure. Can we have, we'll have two at a time, one at each lectern, please. Michael Klausnick at one, and Teresa Zabick at the other. Okay, Michael Klausnick, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mike Klausnick. I lived in the Lake Brooks community for 20-something years.
Can we get your address, please?
Oh, sorry. 8548 Lake Point Court in Lake Worth. Corner house in the Culversack. We have a lot of traffic going around in all the different areas. We have quite a few schools. We have no lights in Blue Cypress area, which is very bad for the community. We have a lot of different areas coming up, like they opened up the coffee shops and all the different areas, which is bringing on more traffic, matter of fact. And I see that it's going to get a little bit more crazy and more harrier because we've got a lot more schools, a lot more kids coming in, a lot more areas being used. And a lot of people are concerned because we already have abundance amount of schools in our area. And I think it's too much. And I believe that we should stop and think about the safety of more kids and more areas in our vicinity. And I think we should really think about it before we put more areas and more, you know, more schools or more anything else that we need, because right now, I don't think it's necessary. And our area is already overwhelmed, and I say that we shouldn't do it. I don't believe it should be concerned. I think we're okay already, and I think it'll get even worse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Could Rosa Doherty just go to that lectern, please?
Good morning. Teresa Zabick. I live at 5527 Adair Way, Lake Worth, Florida. I've been a resident of LOS for 25 years. I appreciate you all letting us do this today so we can share a little bit more information than what appears on paper. Sometimes numbers and traffic flows, et cetera, don't necessarily represent what we see on a daily basis living in the community, which is probably true for every one of you all in your neighborhoods, too. My basic concern, again, is the flow of traffic, specifically in that general vicinity. Lyons Road and Lantana, that intersection is a very dangerous intersection already. The statistics show that last year, there were 32 crash-related incidents at that intersection. That's a lot of incidents. That's almost two and a half per month. In addition, obviously, with Garcia High School being there, we've got new traffic flow, new students coming on there, driving, et cetera. I think of interest is the fact that one-third approximately of those accidents, of those 32 accidents on the corner of where this site is generally proposed, occurred in the northeast quadrant of that intersection, which is also another important flow pattern for this new proposed site. My second concern regarding traffic is the fact that Aquarius Boulevard, when you're coming south away from this proposed site, and you're trying to go east, so you're making that left. Okay, you're coming south on Aquarius Boulevard, you're trying to make a left onto Lantana. That intersection right there is super challenging, as it is right now. I know residents that don't even use that exit because it's so visibly challenging. You've got traffic coming immediately from Lyons Road heading east. You've got the traffic coming from Lyons heading east. You've got potential traffic turning left into the subdivision. So as you're trying to go out and make a left to go east on Lantana, you're dealing with traffic coming this way, traffic coming this way, and traffic coming into the subdivision. It's very, very challenging. And we have 800 residents in our community alone. Plus, you have 1,000 plus from Garcia High School. I think it's around 1,700 students and staff. You have about 1,500 from Woodlands Middle School. You have the autism school down the street that queues every day at 3:30 all the way down Lantana Road. So just put it in perspective of your community and hope you'll do a good job of reviewing it, and if there are concerns, to address those. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, keep it down so we can hear everything, okay?
Richard Campbell, please go to the other lectern.
Okay, your name and address?
Good morning. My name is Rosa Doherty, and I live in 8750-540 Gredeisle. I work in the school for special needs, special unit in Discovery Key. And I go every morning to work before the bus comes, so I don't get in the traffic. And I always see, every morning, I see the traffic, oh, the kids with their bags, their scooters going. And it's very dangerous over there. I've been, I've seen people driving like, you know, as fast, and they don't even stop the stop sign, where it's in Aquarius Boulevard and Rosemont. So I'm thinking that it's not necessary to have and get more accidents like we did have, because the school, you know, we have three schools, and now with the daycare, it's going to be, I mean, a little bit too crowded. So I'm here to suggest, give an opinion that it is not necessary. You know, I see how people drive in the morning, and I see those parries. It's enough, the traffic going by middle school, Woodland Middle Schools, the high school. I'm living here four years already, and I already see this, and sometimes I get so frustrated looking at that, how my kids are already grown. But with this accident in the school, as a teacher assistant, I'm very concerned, and I wish it couldn't be even, you know, in our mind, put in another daycare or school with all this, which I don't agree. I don't know, I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bridget Pesargus?
Okay, my name is Richard Campbell. I am the president of the Lakes of Sherbrooke Homeowners Association, 898 single-family homes. Looking at the proposed...
Can we have your address?
Excuse me?
Your address?
Oh, 5565 Adair Way, Lake Worth. I'm sorry. Looking at the proposed daycare, I looked on the website, and it's called a school. Currently, we have four schools and five daycares within a three-mile radius. Three of those schools and one of the daycares are adjacent to our community. In other words, they impact our community directly. If you drive up Aquarius during drop-off and pickup times, the middle school, at times, the Aquarius is impassable. The autism school, as was mentioned a few minutes ago, the people queue up, they block an entire lane of Lantana Road. The other day, I was coming east on Lantana from State Road 7, and I was stopped in traffic... in traffic, probably a hundred yards, maybe a little more, from the entrance to the Lakes of Sherbrooke. Traffic was stopped because the road was blocked with people trying to get into the autism school. This is a common, common situation. Currently, with the Garcia School opening, parents are finding it's difficult to get into the school and pick up their kids, so the kids are crossing the canal, and they're being picked up behind the middle school on Aquarius, which is doing nothing but adding to the traffic. As was mentioned, uh, the pickup and drop-off times for the proposed daycare are the same as the pickup and drop-off times for the schools. If you want to know what we've got in our, in our area, you've got Garcia High School, Woodlands Middle, Palm Beach School for Autism, Coral Reef Elementary, which is down the road, but it's still within three miles, and they block Lantana Road as well. You then have, uh, the Learning Experience, Planet Kids, Bright Horizons, the Epiphany Lutheran Early Learning Center, and the Study Zone, all within our area. The traffic is, I've lived in this community since nineteen-eighty-eight, and I have never seen this kind of traffic, even with the development out west of us.
Your, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Berman, please.
Okay, you can state your name and address to my right here.
Bridget Parson.
My name is Bridget Pesargus, and I live on eighty-three eighty-nine Blue Cypress Drive, Lakewood, three-three-four-six-seven. I'm totally against the Sherbrooke Center application. It will be very difficult and dangerous to live in my area. I just recently had an incident where I was actually almost getting killed, and that was like, within a week, uh, that somebody just, uh, from Lions, Lions Road to Lantana Road, I saw it come, I saw it coming, I thought it was coming to me, and I was just, um, very, it was very terrible to have that because I wa, I'm fearful with all the traffic that's going on and with the children, that it, it's just too much. The other thing that I'm concerned about, because I live on Blue Cypress Drive, it's probably going to happen that a lot of, if this is going to go through, that a lot of the kids and the parents are going to be picked up, uh, on Blue Cypress Drive, that's where I live. And, uh, it's just a very dangerous area and too many schools, as everybody is talking about, and I, I just do not want to have this, uh, being approved. I'm going to appeal it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Salvo, the other lectern, please.
Hi, my name is Sue Berman. I'm at eighty-two-ten Whitewood Cove East, and I'm a thirty-year resident of the Lakes of Sherbrooke. And I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed zoning change for a daycare center at the Sherbrooke Center. While I am not opposed to daycare centers in general, I am str, I strongly believe this is not the right place for one. One of my primary concerns is the potential for increased traffic, both within our community and on the surrounding roads, Lantana Road and Lions Road, which are the two main streets near our neighborhood. There is already a daycare center and the School for Autism on Lantana Road, which other people have mentioned earlier, and they're less than a quarter mile from the proposed site. The congestion on Lantana Road during school drop-off and pickup times is already significant. Without a traffic light at the intersection of Aquarius and Lantana, traffic often backs up into our community. Additionally, Rosemont, a smaller road connecting Lions Road to Aquarius, also experiences heavy traffic during these times. Adding vehicles from the daycare center would worsen the situation, impacting both Aquarius and Rosemont due to the traffic already traveling on both Lantana and Lions. Another key concern is safety. The increased traffic on Aquarius and the two main roads poses a danger to the children who live in the proposed daycare center area and who walk or bike to Gar, um, to Wong Garcia High School or Woodlands Middle School. Tragically, just a few months ago, a middle school student was killed on Lions Road near Woodlands due to heavy after-school congestion. This is a heartbreaking reminder of the risks posed by additional traffic in our area. For these reasons, I strongly oppose the proposed daycare center at this location. I urge the zoning commission and the Board of County Commissioners to deny this request and to preserve the land use plan, which better aligns with the Lakes of Sherbrooke character and avoids intensifying traffic, noise, and safety issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Music.
I'm ready. Good morning, my name is Kathleen Salvo. I live at eighty-seven fifty-three Ego Isle Terrace in Lakewood. To say we're inundated by schools is an understatement. A middle school, a high school, I don't know if anybody took a, a ride to the actual site, and as has been said by everybody before me, we did our job as about, uh, housing, housing schools. The thing that people are forgetting is that they're looking at this project as something that's needed, something that's not going to affect the neighborhood, it's an isolated incident. I wish you would all go back to what we just mentioned, the, um, January mishap that was very unfortunate, and listen to the people in the neighborhood who are saying how dangerous Lions Road is, and that we have to do something about that area. It's all been confirmed by all the residents that spoke at that, uh, when they were being interviewed by the reporter. In addition, I, I congratulate the middle school kids, because they're the adults in the room, for writing a petition saying that we need to fix Lions Road to make it more safety. And I plan on working on it this summer with your building, with your zoning department, they're wonderful, to make things better, and then I get hit with this application, which is, ah, where did this come from? The thing is, not the daycare per se, it's the getting in and out of it. The roads do not, the driveways do not accommodate the cars, you cannot get, I don't think you can get a fire truck in there to make the circle. Now, there's things that were not mentioned. Number one, on that corner by the church, it's used as a bus stop, not a bus stop, like a bus stop, a school bus stop. Anybody that has children going to, I forgot the name of the school, they're allowed to put, bring their children there, to get picked up as a cluster on one side and the other. That bus is not going to be able to, to do their duty. The Garcia, we're so proud to have hosted and, um, and have the, the new high school there, it's beautiful, state of the art. They have lights coming in, they have traffic lanes. If anybody goes there, these roads cannot accommodate any in and going out. Very narrow roads with a divider. You can't get a fire truck in, you can't get a car out. Everybody has SUVs. This school can go anywhere, this is no hardship. This is a variance. This got here because you use the technicality that it's a business, because people pay. It's not needed. Our schools, our kids come by bicycles, they come walking. This school, nobody walks, nobody's going to have a bicycle, these are infants, which is very safe. You park your car, you bring your child in, you sign them out, and then they come out. So there will be no, uh, foot traffic or, or, it's the, it's the getting the people in and out. The hours of operation are unreal. We who are, um, don't work, we make our doctor's appointments after school hours because we can't get out. Like Teresa said, you cannot make a left suicidal, you can't make a right into the property. The driveways are narrow, there's no, you can't navigate the actual site. And it's not needed. It's not a hardship, it's not needed, and there's no, I don't know, I don't know how you, you just, you discovered that it could, you could give it a variance, a B variance, whatever you call it, a conditional variance.
Thank you. Your time is up, thank you.
I don't think that should be used. Thank you.
I live at eighty-five forty-four Lake Point Court in the Lakes of Sherbrooke. I am opposed to this daycare going up in Sherbrooke. I've lived there for twenty-five years. I am literally five hundred feet from this going up. My backyard is facing the school that would be built there. I reiterate everything that everyone has said here regarding all the schools in the area. There are five daycares, four schools, in a three-mile radius. This will increase the vehicle traffic for drop-off pickup times, which will be the same, uh, same as a lot of the schools. Our roads are not built for the volume of traffic that this will bring to our neighborhood. As was just said, a child was killed on Lions Road. The safety risks and the noise disturbance, there's no plan for a wall going up. There's so many shops right there on Lantana Road across from Lakes of Sherbrooke. We have LA Fitness, CVS, coffee shops. There have been so many accidents, there's no light right there at Lantana and Aquarius where people exit our development. We hear crashes all the time, sirens, especially at Lantana and Lions Road, that is a very big place for accidents. As was reiterated with the woman earlier, she had all the numbers of the amounts of accidents that had occurred. A commercial, you know, a daycare is just not wanted or needed in this neighborhood. I feel that there will be a lot of negative things that will happen with our community due to this, and I am absolutely opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we have Christopher Fayad, I think it is, needs to be sworn in if you wish to speak.
Yes. Fayad. Good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity. Oh, sorry.
You need to be sworn in?
Yes, sorry.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity. My neighbors have said a lot, I just want to make...
You need your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Christopher Fayad, eighty-five forty-seven Lake Point Court, Lakewood, Florida, three-three-four-six-seven.
Thank you.
Uh, lived at that address for thirty years, and, uh, four kids. I've seen a lot, uh, they went through all the middle school, but my biggest concern is the, uh, the new high school they just put there. I have kids now walking across my lawn. And, uh, over the thirty years, I've seen a dramatic change in how much kids in my area. I'm opposed to this totally, and please, I would like you all to take a better look at it. It's impossible to get out on the, uh, on Lantana Road because of the traffic, how many cars coming out, and, uh, it has affected my life dramatically. So please, um, consider this, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we just have one other card here, does not wish to speak. Maria Jimenez, eight-five-three-nine Lake Point Court in Lakewood, and it's, uh, she's opposed.
Okay, um, yes, questions?
I have a question for staff. I understand that there's no light at Aquarius and Lantana. It can, I, my question is, has that been looked at? Is that, hold on, it's a two-part question. Has that been looked at? What are the numbers? Why isn't there a light there, apparently? I mean, even just looking at the Google map, it looks like it would be impossible to take an eastbound onto Lantana from Aquarius. But my other question is, we've had evidence here today that the, um, middle school is actually using Aquarius for pickup. And how is that accounted for in the county's traffic flow, traffic pattern, traffic studying, and the rationale for no light at Aquarius and Lantana?
Good morning, this is Quasi Bari from the Traffic Division. As for your first question about the traffic signal on Lantana and Aquarius, that intersection is extremely close to the Lantana and Lions Road intersection, where there is already a signal.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear him?
Just speak up a little, yeah. Closer to the mic?
Yeah. Yeah, what I was saying regarding the first question regarding, uh, the possible traffic signal at Lantana and Aquarius, that intersection is very close to the intersection of Lantana and Lions Road, where there is already a signal. So most likely, that will, that intersection will not qualify for a, for a new signal. And regarding your other question regarding the traffic on Aquarius, you know, uh, traffic flow on Aquarius for the middle school, when they do the analysis for this proposed daycare, they take care of all the background traffic. So if there is any traffic, uh, you know, using Aquarius, that will be captured in the traffic counts, which they use for the analysis.
Well, so my question regarding, is regarding the traffic, though, when the middle school was built, um, I noticed that there's no entryway onto Aquarius from the middle school, but it's obvious that it's actually using Aquarius. And so, um, I'm just looking at some equity for these homeowners who are in this area who aren't able to, I mean, they're not being account, that, that traffic count hasn't been accounted for because it's actually being split between Lions and Aquarius for the traffic pickup on the, on the middle school.
Right, this is, uh, most likely, uh, you know, code enforcement issue. If they are not supposed to use this, then we can, you know, notify the code enforcement to go out there and look at, you know, if they're dropping off or picking up kids from Aquarius for the middle school.
This, this is a challenge that wouldn't be captured in a traffic study, that is looking at, you know, different kind of, um, multipliers. This, this seems to be a pattern, and unfortunately, school is over, well, a lot of people would think, fortunately, school is over for the summer, because if they have kids and they want to go to camp. But, um, there are at least two or three other schools that we have seen near our zoning applications where schools, either a charter school or a public school, is resulting in people pulling over, stopping, and letting their kids walk in, that's not allowed. And the other instance that we have, when we investigated it with, uh, it was more of a sheriff compliance issue, uh, not a code enforcement issue, because they were pulling over in the right-of-way, and they were blocking traffic. In this particular instance, I can't speak to that, because this is the first I'm finding out about this today. But, you know, people shouldn't be parking on woodland in the grass and waiting for the school to open, or releasing their kids and letting them walk down the street to woodland. There, I would, having had children in daycare myself, I have personally never experienced somebody going and stopping in a right-of-way and dropping off their child for daycare. So the odds of that happening on Aquarius are probably nil. They will, the, the patrons of the daycare would be going into the daycare parking lot, parking and walking their children, and you're required typically to sign in your kid and sign out your kid. But, yeah, there, there shouldn't be school, children, parents parking on woodland to wait or to drop off their kids.
Right.
I mean, on Aquarius.
Aquarius.
Or woodland.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Going back, uh, to what you were just implying to with the sheriff, it is partially code enforcement, but the sheriff department, can't we request, or can't you guys request somebody to be, have them start handing out tickets in this every couple of days until people get the picture? Because that is unreasonable for the residents to getting in and out of there.
Yes, I think everyone has valid concerns about the impacts of the public schools and the other schools in the area. However, with school being out, you know, if, if what we had been talking about with the other school that, uh, at a different roadway, you know, investigating that, but now school is over, so we have no ability, you know, this month, between now and the BCC, to be able to do any kind of assessment or coordinate with sheriff, because there won't be, oh, I mean, they might have summer camp at woodland, but it probably is not nearly the volume.
Not necessarily so much for the summer, but can't we assure the residents that they'll start seeing some action in regards, just because if they can't get a traffic light, which is really what it looks like it needs. I understand the distance issues. But, um, if we can't do that, can't we help support the residents that, during school, that we would have it strictly enforced?
We can coordinate with the school district and the sheriff department, and code compliance is needed, although it might be out of their scope. Definitely, absolutely, now that we know that this is an issue, we can try our best as PZB to coordinate with the school district and sheriff.
Definitely, and especially with the recent accident that occurred on Lions Road. I believe there is a stronger PBSO presence in that area, so I, and I know that our engineering department is working, um, with the community on, on anything that can be done, but I, I don't think that...
They barely haven't done much.
Well, there's not much that they can do. The roads are designed to the, you know, the county standards, and, um, and PBSO is, is the person that would have to enforce along the right-of-way, so we, if, and we don't regulate the, um, development orders of the school district. So if, even if they weren't in compliance, it would be something about, um, us reaching out to the school district and asking them to take a more proactive approach, um, as far as enforcement of where people are parking.
Can we require anything, uh, out of the school district, uh, in that regard, that we put some pressure on them?
Well, if the school district, it, I think the... Well, if the school district, I think these are rogue parents. If they're parking along Aquarius, and they shouldn't be, you know, that might be out of the scope of what the school district can do. And you know, the, the Garcia School is brand-new, I don't know if that's changed patterns. I mean, I'm sure the public has spoken, that's just exasperated a traffic situation, but all we can promise is that we can meet with the school district, and we can meet with the sheriff, and open a dialogue with them, and encourage them to have a conversation with the residents.
Something needs to be done, obviously. There's no, one last thing, there's no possibility, is it an exception, to put a traffic light with that much traffic coming out of one small area? I understand the distance requirements, we don't meet, but isn't there exceptions to these things?
Distance will be a very big factor for this location.
What is the distance?
I mean, theoretically, on a road like this, the minimum distance should be a quarter-mile between two signals.
Quarter-mile, hmm.
Quarter-mile and a half-mile, you know, half-mile for a hundred feet or greater right-of-way.
Hmm, okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I would like to. When, when we listen to all the community coming here with all the data about accidents, about everything that is happening, it's not recently. It looks like it's happened before, and for me today, it's like, nobody knows about it. How, how hard is the traffic? How hard is in general for a school, for the other school, or the other school? And how come, how come everything is so pile today, that the community has to come and tell us how hard it is to drive, how hard it is to go around with one school over another? Because today is a school, or the daycare, but tomorrow it can be another store, or another place, and it's going to be, the problem is not the schools itself, it's the traffic around, and the planning around. And for me, it's like, I really, as a citizen, I don't get it, and I, I really, it doesn't make any sense to come today and listen all the accidents, just about one business.
Refrain, let us continue.
That, that's my, my opinion about that.
Yeah, thank you, that's a good comment, and we've seen this before on multiple applications, that this, the, the project that comes in, it has not been built. It hasn't created any of the traffic issues. We've had multiple sites with either school bus stops, or school-related traffic, that the public has received a postcard, and they have an opportunity to speak and to bring it to the county's attention. So this is like the third one over the past two years, where a new development is looking to go in, and there's existing issues and existing problems, actually, more than the third over the past couple of years. But, yeah, so that's, you know, it's an opportunity for people to speak, and we will, we've, we'll listen to them, and we will try our best to work with the school district and the sheriff on the, you know, the existing issues.
Commissioner Benek.
I have a question for the applicant.
And actually, Mr. Chair, it might be appropriate at this time, since they're coming up, to allow them for a rebuttal?
That's fine.
I, I have a question. Did you engage with the community at all? Did you meet with them, the board of directors or anything? Just my question.
There's been a couple of meetings over the past few weeks.
Commissioners in this area.
No, we're talking about, I'm, I'm talking about the community, the adjacent community that's being impacted. Did you, did you have any conversations with them?
No, I don't believe there is official meeting set up to discuss this.
Thank you, just, now.
And any rebuttal? Do you have anything else you want to say?
I have Brian here to speak on some traffic.
I'll speak on a couple of things, just in, for the record, Brian Kelly, Vice President and Traffic Engineer at Simmons and White. A lot of traffic questions came up, so it's probably appropriate for me to answer some of these. Mr. Berry did a good job answering some of them as well. There are a couple of things I do want to highlight. The, you know, this site is approved, has an existing retail approval here. The tra, the daily traffic associated with the retail versus the daycare is actually very similar, it's not a, not a very big change.
Keep it down and let him speak.
And it's important, when we're talking about a daycare, to realize it's not the same type of traffic as a school. I do school traffic studies all the time, and I'm very aware of what those patterns are. What you get is you have schools, such as Woodlands or Garcia, which has a very high student number, say, you know, a thousand, fifteen-hundred in Garcia's standpoint, probably even higher. They have a very, very condensed arrival time and dismissal. So, all of those students are essentially arriving within a fifteen-to-twenty-minute time period, and when they leave, it's the same thing as well. And what happens is, these schools create queuing issues, they back out onto the road, and there are lots of traffic issues caused by schools. Daycares are very, very different. I've been to a number of daycares, and a number of traffic studies on daycares, and candidly, I've sent three kids to daycare, so I'm very, very familiar with the patterns. The drop-off and dismissal is very spread out. There is a window where you come in, and it's normally over a couple of hours, so it's not this fifteen-minute time period, it's over two hours. It's a, a much, much lower number of students, in this case, about two-hundred students, and the people aren't queuing, the parents aren't queuing, it has been discussed. You go into the site, you park, you walk in, you walk in the kid, you walk out. So there's no kind of queuing issues, there's not going to be any drop-off or pickup outside of essentially the site right there, not on Aquarius, not anywhere else. And when you look at the traffic associated with the daycare in comparison to the overall roadway network, it's really about a one percent impact. From a, a standpoint of Palm Beach County traffic performance, we've submitted a traffic study, it meets your code requirements, it meets the traffic performance standards. Through the intersection of Lantana and Lyons, that's been discussed, our impact is actually less than one percent. By county's requirements, that's actually considered insignificant or de minimis. So, this extra traffic, number one, has already been considered as vested as part of the retail, so there's some changes associated with the daycare, but there's already traffic associated with that, and the actual impact is very, very little. A couple of things I want to touch on real quick, too, is Aquarius. So Aquarius, I know there's been discussion about the traffic signal, Mr. Berry answered that very well. From a spacing standpoint, it's not realistic as well. We, we did counts on Aquarius, so any school traffic that may have been using Aquarius for Woodlands, whether they were supposed to do that or not supposed to do that, that was factored into the traffic study, because we went in and got counts out there. And once again, this meets the traffic performance standards. But the important thing to also know is, just to the east here, I know it's probably a little, you can't see it on the screen, Aquarius loops around to the east on Lantana. There's actually a traffic signal on Aquarius and Lantana, just to the east there, so any residents living within the community are, and you're going east on Lantana, you're able to go out to the east and use the traffic signal at that location. So certainly, for some of the residents that may live on the west side, you'd have to loop around, maybe a little bit inconvenient, but a lot of that traffic does that, because it's a much easier way of getting out, and it's much more logical. So not only is there a single spacing issue for the traffic signal, the volumes very likely wouldn't warrant it anyway, there has to be minimum volume thresholds to meet that requirement. And because some of these residents are able to go to that other site, and frankly, it's more convenient for many of them going in eastbound Lantana, there's, they're already utilizing a traffic signal that's there. So, you know, I didn't answer maybe every single question, but want to talk, you know, touch base on the main traffic topics that were discussed, and provide a little bit of context associated with them. Certainly, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I just have one more comment.
One more question?
I have one, oh, can we do comments?
Yes.
Okay. I do see that the traffic counts for the daycare are less than the already existing approved use on this property, but I think that we have heard evidence here today that there is an issue here, and I would encourage the residents to attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting. We are only an advisory group, they are the decision-makers, and I think that you should use this opportunity to bring your valid concerns to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, one more.
One, one last comment. I see what the difference is here, schools that fill up the outside perimeters of the school, but I think everybody needs to understand, it's a daycare that they're pulling into the spot on the property, just like they would be if a commercial development was approved, which, which is approved. So, they're not taking, they're not putting any traffic out on the street where they're backing up. There's presumably sufficient parking on the site itself to handle this daycare center. I think what the, the public needs to understand, this daycare center, as I see it, is not the issue, it's the issues that are coming from the other schools, that do not have places for everybody to come in and park, and take the traffic flow off the street. So, their issue needs to be, as she just recommended, taken to the county, let, let that board make that decision, but most importantly, that shouldn't affect the daycare center that's got parking in itself internally, which has nothing to do with the problem that's been discussed here, that this board seems to be in tune with.
I, I have one question for staff. Someone, one of the speakers mentioned this is a variance, is this a variance request?
No, there's no variance. A lot of folks use that term when they mean a zoning application, but there's no variance.
Just wanted to clear that up. All right, do we have a-
Can I make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, kind of bringing the focus back, and since we kind of went outside the scope of, of this property itself, I wanted to make it clear that when, for the benefit of the members and also the public, that when you're making a decision in a quasi-juridicial hearing, it has to be based on the standards of approval.
Right.
And so, if the applicant has provided what you believe is sufficient evidence to demonstrate that they've satisfied those standards, you would approve, yes. If you believe that there's any evidence to support a finding that one of the standards hasn't been met, then that's when, you know, denial can come into effect, but it's, it's, it can't just be based on opinion, it has to be based on the standards of approval.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, may I make a motion to recommend approval of item five point A?
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, motion passed.
Second motion to recommend approval of items five point B.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. All right, so we'll move on then to item eight.
I just want to clarify for the public, this is just a recommendation. The Board of County Commissioners hearing is on June 18th, at 9:30 a.m., downtown 301 North Olive.
Item nine.
Hey.
Okay, we're on to item nine?
Yes, that brings us to item number nine. It is a Recreation Vehicle Plan Development Regulation, ULDC revision, and we can, we had a presentation last month.
Yeah.
So, we're looking for two motions to approve or recommend approval, and to recommend that it is compliant with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I mean, if you'd like a presentation, Alex can provide one.
We already did that last week.
I think we've, we've heard enough about it.
Okay.
We're ready for a motion.
I'll motion to approve staff recommendation of item nine A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None.
And, and then the zoning commission, we're serving as the Land Development Regulation Commission pursuant to Florida statute, approves staff recommendation of item nine B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, ten.
Item ten, then.
So, this item is a privately proposed revision to the ULDC. We've been directed by the Board of County Commissioners to simplify and remove cumbersome regulations to the code, and we try our best to bring those items to the board, but if a private applicant sees a hurdle, they have the opportunity to present to this board and the Board of County Commissioners, we would like to privately propose revisions to the ULDC. So in this case, how the process works is, there's phase one, in which case, we make a recommendation, this board recommends, makes a recommendation on whether or not to initiate this item, and then after that, if the board initiates the item, they will work with the applicant, and then move forward with permission to advertise first reading, second reading as needed. There is draft revisions in the attachment, they are draft. If it's initiated, the, the changes that might move forward that you see next time might be different. But we have an applicant here for a presentation, and then staff is available.
Okay.
Hi, good morning. Scott Backman, on behalf of the applicant. Not often that I'm here without a room full of people behind me, so this is actually quite nice. Just, just coupling off of what Lisa mentioned, here with a privately initiated amendment, really regarding townhouse regulations per the ULDC, but I would really probably classify this as more of a housekeeping item. We've been meeting with zoning staff for the better part of the last year. I am here on behalf of a developer applicant, but as townhomes are becoming more prominent within the county, we've noticed some, what I would call maybe inconsistencies. Staff report kind of refers to them the same way, between townhouse residential standards, and then some other residential standards that exist within the code. And so, what you see here, and, and our request initially, was to come in and request a modification of the rear setback for a townhouse-type unit from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. You'll see in just a moment, that is actually consistent with single-family, zero-lot line, multifamily, very large apartment buildings. And so, we're really trying to maybe clean up some inconsistencies based on changes that have happened to the code over the course of the last fifteen to twenty years. In working with staff, we've added some additional items here to try and really clean it up, and just make it a lot easier, a lot cleaner to interpret, as staff is doing their review. And so that's why you see some of these other red lines under the setback, under the minimum separation between buildings, and then this is something else in discussions with staff. There was a point in time, and you'll actually see a graphic example, an aerial example of a real-life townhouse community from a number of years ago, where they were approved on parking tracks, in addition to roadways, rights-of-way, driveways. Not every townhome necessarily has a garage, there are some that are surface-parked, things of that nature. And so, like I said, really just some cleanup items that are here in conjunction between my client and working with zoning staff over the last year. So this table shows a comparison, if you look at the various zoning districts, and the nature and type of, of residential development that we're talking about, as I mentioned, single-family, zero-lot line, RM zoning, which are multifamily buildings and CLFs. And then there's another distinction with, if you're within a planned development district. Interestingly enough, for townhomes, although not necessarily the most impactful type of single-family unit that's built, has a much more significant rear setback requirement, and in PDDs, the planned developments, it actually is measured from the buffer tract. And so in some cases, you've got almost as much of a, as a forty-five-foot rear setback for a townhouse, when townhouses are really intended to be a more compact form of residential development. We all talk, I know this board hears, with workforce housing and the need and the scarcity of land within this county, that being able to provide, I would say, more flexible zoning regulations, and zoning regulations that are maybe a little more consistent with every other residential housing type within the ULDC, is kind of the goal of this amendment. These are some, some details that we created, just to give maybe more of an example. You can see up on the top side of the screen is what you would be looking at with a townhouse development. Bottom left is single-family, middle is zero-lot line. I'd like to focus your attention on the bottom right, the most intense and most impactful form of development, multifamily, again, three, four, five-story apartment buildings, have a fifteen-foot rear setback requirement, not even necessarily measured from a buffer tract, and we're just trying to clean this all up, so there's some consistency amongst how the regulations are applied for other types of residential product within the county. And then I think this last slide is really just the example of what I was mentioning. This is built in the unincorporated area, you've got fifteen-foot rear setbacks here, it was built at a time, and we worked, we looked at this with zoning staff during a couple of meetings a while ago. It's also on a parking track, so I think it just really gives a good example of the type of, of community that we're talking about, and really being able to come in, avoid the need for variances, things of that nature, to allow townhouses to be developed consistent with other residential product types within the county. I think that's it. Happy to answer some questions. I do have some other examples of a more urban form townhome, and, and some photos, if you'd like to see them, and, you know, I think that's the, kind of the trend and the direction that the county's likely moving in, but that last example is probably the most consistent with what we're talking about here.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I have one question of staff. A parking tract, is that their definition in the ULDC for that?
Olive Valley Land Development, yes, there is a definition for a parking tract, and in Article 11, that is an option, but it, it's currently not a standard that they can use. they can use, um, but, and it was in our code previously, and we took it out, and so we're recommending to put that back in, because it does make sense.
Okay, the definition?
The definition's in there, yes, so you can find it in Article eleven.
Right, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion to recommend initiation of item ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None.
Great, thank you all, have a great weekend.
Thank you. That's the end of the regular agenda, any comments? From anyone?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, then we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.